...are the regular meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Board. Preliminary matters, agenda additions or deletions from...
None from the staff, Mr. Chairman.
Anything from the board members?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Public comment, I don't believe there's going to be too much public comment today, so... And seeing nobody, we'll close the public. And our regular meeting, we'd like to have the approval of our minutes.
Okay, I just have one typo in here. It's under "Public Comment" on page 1, about halfway down to the right-hand side. There was a sentence that responded at the ordinance on short-term rentals was "weakly..." was "weak." I believe that should be W-E-A-K. That's the only thing. Just a typo.
I had actually caught that myself, just didn't want to mention it.
There's one other, actually, on page 5.
Oh, see that?
5?
Yeah. We were talking with Attorney Siegel, and I think I used the word "ameliorate," and it came out "ammoniate," which may have been more appropriate under the circumstances, by the way.
Also, we have an excused absence for Don from our board for today, so I'd like to put that into the minutes. And now we have a public hearing.
Well, we need a motion.
We need a motion on the minutes, forgive me. Thank you, Sherri. Could we have a motion on the minutes?
To approve.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. And now, I believe, we move into a public hearing in regards to an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 76 Historic Preservation of the City of Vero Beach Code to meet the requirements of the Florida Certified Local Government Program and to make minor editorial changes in the content and formatting of the text, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date. With that in mind, I'd like to open it for public hearing, seeing nobody wishing to speak on it from the public.
Okay, you don't need any staff comment, that's all right.
You want staff comment?
No, I mean, I don't, unless she has some specific questions regarding the code.
Well, a couple of things I'd like to make a comment on.
Oh, yeah, please.
And I'd like you to correct me if I'm incorrect on these statements. And that is that this whole ordinance that we're going through is a voluntary ordinance in that there's no requirement that you submit yourself to this within our city.
No, when we did, to get the code passed, we had to make it voluntary. We would never gotten it passed, and that eliminated that. So the only requirement is when, other than if you're going to tear down a building that's on the master file of possible historic buildings, there's a 30-day cooling-off period that you can provide it. We have that in there. But other than that, unless you become designated, that's the... Then you have some requirements you have to meet in that code, and that's clear.
So a person who puts their home or their property or anything else into this historic preservation situation, those individuals, from that point forward, that property will have that designation.
That will have that designation.
So subsequent owners would be required to...
That's right. It goes with the property unless they want to be de-designated, and there's a process for that, but it's very difficult.
But it's complicated.
The one thing that these people can veil themselves, we do have tax abatement, I mean, a tax-type abatement that can be done for improvements on there. So that is, the only way you can get our local tax abatement would be to be a designated property under that. We did that deliberately. Just because you're on the National Register does not give you that privilege, just because we're trying to protect our resources, and because you're on the register does not protect you necessarily from development.
I understand.
All right, so...
Could we go through this, maybe page by page? I've made a lot of little notes, I just would appreciate having them qualified. Sorry.
Sure. No, that's all right. Felt I hadn't done my job.
Okay. On page 3, under definitions, you have addition and a construction project physically connected to the exterior of a historic building. Now, when it says "connected," if... Can you create an entrance?
I'm sorry, where are we?
Under addition, page 3.
Oh, addition.
Yeah. The use of the word "connected." Can you create an entrance there? You know, from, if you're having a construction project connected to the exterior.
Oh, yeah, no, that's...
So you can make a doorway in the wall.
Before we get too excited about these definitions.
Yeah, yeah.
Most of these come from the model ordinance of the statute, okay? They're put in there because when they get into the rehab and looking under the requirements, whether you're, you know, you're meeting that as a historic structure or you're getting, you know, work done on it, they have these in there. And, yeah, this only is defining what an addition is, doesn't say you can't have a entrance in there. So please, yeah, don't get too excited about what we have in here. There's a lot of these definitions comes, were asked to be put in there and come from the state.
Tim, one of the questions I have, it refers to a commission in here. Is it... Would you explain to me, does that commission exist today?
Yes.
It does?
In fact, they looked at, this ordinance came to you.
Okay.
They've already had an opportunity. Do you have a Historic Preservation Commission?
Okay.
This commission now that was developed in the last couple of years, how many people serve on that?
There's five, just like you. You're board and two alternates, whether they had it.
And they're all city residents, right?
They have to be city residents, and that's a requirement of the Certified Local Government, and that's what delayed a lot of this, is that we were still trying to get members to be residents, and it took a while before we finally got there. But you can't, we've talked with the state, and we just could not be certified unless we had local residents.
Does the information in this epistle we have here of 48 pages, does this particular follow exactly what we have to have to be compatible with what the state's requiring us?
Yes.
So if we modify this significantly, are we become in violation of that?
Well, I mean, you can modify it somewhat, but we've got already, it's been approved by the state Historic Preservation Officer. I mean, there are things you could do that are different, and, but, you know, unless, if they're substantive, there may be a problem, but I can't say without knowing what we'd be talking about.
So tweaking is probably the best we could do to modify this.
Tweaking is about the best you can do.
I would agree with that. Otherwise, if it's anything substantive, it would have to go back to the state and start the review process all over.
I mean, this is, most of the localities and counties follow the state model ordinance.
Okay.
And the ones that want to be a Certified Local Government are going to follow the language they have in there. So that's why you'll see language in there. Some of it is our own, but it needs to meet a specific requirement asked that, what, that the state Historic Officer asks us to put in there. And before we go any further, probably one of the substantive change, the big substantive change that was done in here that might, was the way we designated sites, the way we had it in there, somebody fills an application out and submits it through the staff to the Historic Preservation Commission, but then the commission can decide whether they want to look at the application or not. Well, since it's a due, it's a quasi-judicial process, we changed it to be your typical, you do an application, go through the staff, we make a report to the HPC, and they make it, you know, at that time. So that was one of the big, the real big change in here. Other than that, everything else is really either to clarify text or to come into compliance with what the state was asking us to be the model ordinance.
I think one of the biggest questions I have goes back to a personal experience, actually. Many years ago, Ruth Standbridge, who was the county historian, addressed my homeowners' association on an annual meeting, and she informed everyone present that we had homes in Vero Isles that were over 50 years old, and that they qualified for a historic home and the kinds of incentives that come along with encouraging that. And this was news to, I think, everyone there. And so when I'm looking at this now, I see that there's going to be a survey to identify historic homes, sites, et cetera.
Well, the last survey was done in 1990 or '92, so it's already out of date.
Uh-huh.
And it takes money to do the survey. One of the things that we're looking at, we had looked at maybe partnering with the county on doing a survey, that one done. The only surveys we've done, and I think, if you remember, recall, Anna Brady, who is on the Historic Preservation Commission, she had done two, the two inner-city neighborhoods, original town in Ossio Park, she did the surveys for them. So they're up to date, or more up to date. The rest of the city is not up to date. Riomar and all, we have a lot of homes that could be added, just because you're 50 years old, that may make you eligible, but normally you have to have a survey done because some of those, whatever the historic features of them are gone because people have done substantial renovations and everything on them, they just lost that.
They've kept the footprint, and, yeah.
But one of the things about the Certified Local Government would be, would be more, would be eligible to get for some of these grants, and one of the things we would want to look at is to update the historic inventory. And that has been something we've talked about.
So now I'm thinking of people who may own these homes. How does this impact them?
Well, as this, as it says in this ordinance, I mean, I think there are good economic benefits for historic preservation. I don't have to sit here and, you know, it works in many places.
Sure.
For the individual homeowners, it's really up to them, the, what they want to do. I mean, I've had, what is it, we had one of the historic, I can't remember the name, it was historic, we've had people, when the ordinance went into place, they were given the opportunity whether they want to be designated or not at that time, that were on the historic, and we had several of them that pulled out, did not want to be because it would tie their property. So the individual homeowners have to look at whether it's worth their doing from their standpoint, and that's an individual decision. But we have had only one, Chris Rungy's house over on...
Original town.
Over in Original Town is the only one that's come in. Most of the other properties are either publicly owned by the city or some other organization, and, but haven't come in, even though they can't, they're either on the historic register, National Historic Register, or could be, but they just haven't felt they want to do that because it does tie your hands. I mean, you have to meet these requirements if you become designated, and a lot of people just do not want to do that on their property.
And there's no penalty to them, I think?
No, there's no penalty at all for that. I mean, some communities, such as Fort Pierce, it's not vol... They can put a designation on your property without your approval. I mean, they have a process, so you, yeah, a process you go through, but what I'm saying, we did not take that approach, or we've never gotten it through.
Yeah, and there's nothing in this ordinance that would even hint at something like that.
No, no. So I think most of the people are aware of what's required there, we're very upfront with them. Obviously, I think you'll see a lot of the, what the Historic Preservation Commission is seeing is a lot of what they're doing is more of education. We had the historic district down Ossio Park, it's on the National Register, but there's no requirements in there for people to keep their homes that way. It's more of a, an incentive for people, you know, and maybe in the future, they'll want to be that way. I mean, people have talked about doing a historic district or even a conservation district, which is not quite as cumbersome or burdensome on the property owners, but it would restrict some of the things that could be done on the property just to keep the characteristics of that neighborhood, so.
The other question I had here, when does this board, P and Z, get involved in this? Because I noticed some of the things went directly from the Historic Preservation Committee to the City Council, and then there's a later cross-reference to some things coming before.
Anything that requires your development approval's got to come through you.
Okay.
Okay. They'll need, they'll need to be certified. So normally, when you have a public hearing, there are things, for instance, a regular certificate, I think that's what we call it, I can do as the planning director. That's administrative, and those are the, you know, put in winter. For instance, the, not the community center, the Heritage Center, they had the windows being replaced. That was approved by me. It didn't change the character of the building, but what they were doing, they provided the information, and they were able to, they've been doing that over the last, for a while, they've been changing those windows out. So that was one that could be done by the planning director. The rest of them go to the board in a quasi-judicial hearing where they give them a special certificate of appropriateness. Now, if there's any development that requires your approval, it will have to be approved by you, too.
Okay.
And they would have to have that certificate, so.
Hey, Tim, you might mention the Ice Age Group. That was pretty interesting that went through that board for the certificate to dig, or...
Well, they went through that board to get the designation. So we have a, yeah, that's one, that's a good point. We did do a designation of, the old Ice Age site has been designated an archaeological zone. So anything in there requires having a certificate to dig, which the planning director does, but since it's inside the airport, we probably would dovetail that with the license agreement that has to be approved by FAA. So we don't try to duplicate that, but that sufficed because they have to go into a lot of regulations of how it's going to be done on-site, and of course, we would have requirements that you would have to have, you know, protocol for these kind of digs would have to be followed, and that's what had happened. They would have some professor come down and do that and all the other stuff. So that's the only, that's probably one of the things we've done.
Yeah, yeah.
That's on page 32.
Yeah, I cleaned up the language on that so it was more clear that once we've said that the planning director, that's a, takes administrative type of rules.
I'm just going to ask the board members, Honey, and you had kind of set a precedent here, do you want us to kind of go through it? And I only have two or three questions on the whole thing, and I'm...
I have one, just one tiny one.
Okay.
Well, this is if we don't go page by page.
You want to go by page? I'm asking the board, how'd you like Joe? What do you want to do?
I don't have any problems. If Honey has got a few more...
You want to take the lead on Honey?
Okay, page 31.
Is your microphone on?
That's a...
Is your microphone on?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, there you go. On page 31, moving existing structures, that first line says, "A historic site may not be relocated except upon approval."
Right.
That doesn't make sense to me. It should be structure.
Well, I think a site, the definition, their definitions are not that, yeah, that's the problem.
Okay.
I believe, I mean, you have...
The house is the site?
No, it's not defined. Well...
Yeah, see, it's any building, structures, it's defined up front, and it's a real catch-all, so you didn't have a lot, I agree. You wouldn't think a site can be moved, but it means the actual building or structure, okay? Does that clarify?
Yep.
I know, I had the same problem when I went through this. It was hard sometimes to...
I made it to page 31, I thought that was pretty...
Just a question on the word historic, is it an historic site or a historic site? Because you've got it both ways in here.
Well, it's got to be, it's a, it's not a historic, it should be an a historic site, yeah.
Okay.
We should, we got in a little discussion among several of us of what, yeah.
I'm sure.
But since the H is hard, I think it's an A on that, is A, right?
Well, you do have it both ways in here, so, yeah.
Well, that's typical.
Yeah, page 8, on the bottom, you've got a historic site.
Okay, so we will go through and make sure that we have it correct. That's good.
That reflects a difference of opinion, Tim.
Huh?
That reflects the difference of opinion that we had on that.
Well, no, I think it was something else. I got back there, I thought it was, okay. Yeah, you're right, I, we did get in that discussion, but I could see it both ways. It should be one way. I thought with the hard H sound, you use the A.
Yeah.
But I did see in a grammar thing that your assistant by both, you could do it the other way, too, so. But we should keep it the same way, anyway, at least.
Tomato, tomato. Pick one and go with it.
We'll pick one, all right.
Tim, one of the questions I have, and it's a more general question, I put them on the side bars here, is when we have a historical home, and it's been designated with either the certificate or otherwise, okay, a certificate or appropriateness, and they have a situation where they want to do a modification to the home, and it doesn't meet the current building code requirements, which takes precedence? Does historic preservation take precedent, or are they exempt from those codes or not? I don't exactly know how that works.
I think there are certain things in, gee, I wish I had been aware, I would have remembered this. I think there are certain things that they can do under the building code. I'd have to look at the building code, but I do think there's some flexibility under the building code for historic building. I don't think we stated in here. I could find out that for you, because I don't want to...
Well, Mike, just give me an example I'd like to just throw out. If they had to, if the windows didn't meet code and they were rotted, did they have to put the new?
Normally, the new ones, they'll put in, I can tell you that, in Key West at our Administrative Center, when I worked in Monroe County, we took forever to put new windows in because they had to meet the new hurricane, and they, and so we would get these windows that would meet the historic thing, but then they would actually, to test them, they would actually have a machine out there throwing, like, you know, a 2-by-4 into the window.
Wow.
So they were doing testing. So they do have to meet certain requirements of the code. I don't know if they have to meet them all, I just...
And I saw in here someplace, they have exemptions, under certain situations, they have exemptions from parking regulations and et cetera.
Right, they are allowed some exemptions.
So that goes around P and Z board in particular.
Well, that's right, that gives them some more authority to do that, that's exactly right.
So, so in a way, they do get some benefits, for example, if you had a property that had a parking problem, if you, and it was historic, you could, maybe a way to work around that to keep the preservation and get parking, you couldn't otherwise do?
Yes, that's true, because they don't have to meet the variance, the very restrictive variance requirements of a typical piece, you know, property that wants to, we do have special exceptions for parking, but these are easier to meet, obviously, because it's geared to the, to that property, rather than a handicap-type thing, which, you know, there are some restrictions on variances.
Okay.
And I believe they get some, they do get some deference in floodplain regulations, too.
That was my next part, yeah.
But I don't think we have any in the floodplain in our city, so that's not been an issue.
A lot of it seems to be real boilerplate.
Well, as I said, this generally follows, other than it conforms to our procedures, it's been made of, it follows what the model ordinance the state provides.
Yeah, the one I was referring to is 76.52 waivers, and that's where I picked it up.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's in their model ordinance.
Okay.
I do have a question, page 34, under emergency temporary measures, about halfway down, it puts down, "The owner of a building damaged by fire or natural calamity shall be permitted to stabilize the building immediately."
Right.
I don't think the word "fire" is all-encompassing, because how many times have we heard of an accident, you know, causing structural damage, you know, someone will step on the accelerator instead of the brake, and they plow through a building? Could we substitute the word "accident," "damaged by accident" or "natural calamity"?
I'll have to see if that could, I don't know if that would trigger the state, I mean, I don't think it's, we're going to have to send the ordinance to them anyway after we adopt it.
It just seems that if you're limiting it to "fire," "natural calamity," you're not covering other things that could happen.
Well, anything, yes, normally, we would put like an act of God, as we would normally call it, which I think is the better thing to put in there, is...
Usually in place of the act of God language, which is kind of falling out of its favor.
Okay, so what would you?
Go ahead, enter.
By accident or natural calamity?
I think "natural calamity" was meant to include accidents, because I think what they're thinking was...
I just saw "fire" being limited, you know, to the kinds of things that could happen.
No, I know that. I know, I would take a look at the natural calamity.
Maybe we could squeeze "accident" apart.
We could, we could do that. I mean, I don't think that's going to affect it any, but you're right, if act of God becomes, we do have it in our ordinance, other place the ordinance, but you're right, it's kind of falling out of this favor, so we'll put that in.
And then in the development approval process, that, I'm having trouble with that first
word. It seems to me that word "subject" in the first line is confusing me. Subject requiring, that requires approval.
Oh, no, any development, subject, oh, I think you're right.
Subject to a special certificate.
Yeah.
Or, maybe the subject should come out, any development permit application acquiring a special certificate.
Yeah, you don't need to work, that's right, you don't need to work it all.
Yeah, take that out.
No, in fact, I think any development permit subject to a certificate, rather than "special," get rid of that, we'll say a certificate of progress inside this chapter, and that's, that requires approval by the planning director, shall first receive of these entities. Okay, is that okay? Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up, because that's a mistake in there that I had. Not only, geez, how many times have we looked at this and it...
You're not allowed to prove your own work.
Well, no, we've had, we've had attorneys, boards, look at this, and staff, and still have...
Tells you how complex it is, then.
Well, that's good, yeah, very good, I appreciate it.
On page 37, where the assets are required for all property D, it references annual debt service. How is that qualified?
Well, they were looking at, what they're looking to see if there's a, an economic hardship, so they're going to look at what kind of debt service you have in the properties, you have to meet it, so that's just one factor they would look at.
Okay, so that, it's all personal ramification and...
Yes, I mean, this is somewhat, the person that would go through this is trying to get out of designation, saying, I can't, you know...
Using hardship as a excuse, or a reason, shouldn't I say?
Right.
Page 39 at the top, appeals of any city council decision shall be to a court of competent jurisdiction. I'm sure legally you know what that means, but I don't. Is that to the judiciary, or maybe the Board of Adjustment?
No, no, competent jurisdiction, that, most time, I mean, circuit court.
Right, go to the circuit court.
But that's the language just to cover.
Fine.
Well, we're on page 39, then. We go to the, how does the tax, ad valorem tax exemption work exactly? Is it, is it a factor of the building, what the value is, and they get an exemption based on how much?
It's based on the improvement value of the building.
Say, I...
So the improvement, if you increase the building by 100,000, the value of the building is the improvement, then you get a tax abatement on that portion of the improvement being done.
On the improvements, not on the existing?
No, it's on the actual improvement, not on the, it's on the improved part of the property, not the land.
The assessed value of the...
Oh, assessed value, okay.
Improvement.
And does that, we have that exist in our city right now?
Oh, yes. Well, that's what Article 6...
And how many properties take advantage of that?
None.
None? Okay.
Well, remember, if I pointed out, so all our properties are city properties, so we only have, we got a couple of private properties, I think there's, so there are some private ones, but not too many, so we haven't had, and remember, this tax, this abatement's only for the city tax, and our city tax is one small little number, and all the taxes are levied on property.
Now, when the ad valorem tax is, you're, from it, it's for 10 years, at that period of time, you're...
Up to 10 years, I believe.
Up to 10 years. So after that period of time, you're still under the restrictions, but your tax exemption may go away, so it's not a permanent...
Right, it's just for that improvement to give you a return on that, over that 10-year period.
Okay.
You know, an incentive to the investment. Now, if you're, if you're on the National Register, you can also, commercial properties or income-producing properties can get tax credits, which is, for instance, if the diesel plan ever was on its way, they were getting tax, you know, they would have had tax credits, so any of those, so there are other credits if you're that. Now, a residential home does not get that kind of credit.
A lot of our downtown properties might be eligible.
That's correct.
Okay.
When you have commercial properties, income-producing properties.
That handles all my questions.
I had fun with that word "division" on page 42. It wasn't capitalized, and I'm going, what division, what division? Then, of course, I went back and looked in your new definitions, and I realized it's the historical resources of the state of Florida. Should that word be capitalized? Where are you? I'm sorry, page 42, pre-construction application process.
Well, let me...
It just caused me a lot of confusion.
Most of the time, we do not capitalize, like, city council, you're, we don't capitalize it.
Yeah, right.[1690.87]
So, I'll make sure it's consistent, but I don't believe it's capitalized. The only time we capitalize, when you see, we'll use a, you know, the acronym, the letters, like, HPC.
Oh, sure, sure.
Okay, but most, the other times are all in lowercase, okay? Yeah, I have check on that, I don't see it anywhere else.
It just, I had to go back and look in the new definitions and realize what you're talking about.
Yeah, I had, I've seen "division" several places, and they're all lowercase.
On page 46, the exemptions, the revocation, if the property is sold or otherwise transferred from the owner who made the application, that ceases to exist, then?
That's correct.
The new owner would need to reapply, if they wanted to continue the existing?
No, because it's a return on the investment, so they, you know, so, remember, the exemption is for improvements done on the property, so I don't believe that you can do that, or in fact, there's no, you have to be doing improvements on the property to get them.
Okay, it's at the time, yeah, all right.
Oh, if you notice up and under revocation, the properties are damaged by accidental or natural causes, see? So, there's a...
Yep.
But this, this language was, we did this as a separate ordinance at some time to get that abatement through, this was done a while ago. Any other questions?
Robin?
Nope, pretty much.
Joe? No, I just have one comment, I think the opportunity for the applicant in this, in a variety of instances here, to sit down with staff before spending large sums of money to determine what would necessarily be involved in this thing, one way or another, is an excellent provision, because it's, it, it's just a, it's just a good way of, of serving the applicant before he has to invest a lot of his own money because of the involvements that he won't be familiar with until he understands all of these things, and to go out and spend a lot of money for site plans and one thing and another before you know, it's not a good thing, but that, that provision's excellent.
And that's one, and one of the roles of the HPC is to help educate people, and we do, you know, recommend, you know, if we have people interested, now, our staff will help them, but either they can come to the board meeting, get some, or we have very, like, Anna Brady is, that's her back, she's got a master's degree in it, and she's on this kind of thing, that, very helpful, so.
It's a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good board, it's unfortunate, we just don't have, we have the resources, but, you know, we have a code here that really doesn't come into play very often, because there aren't a lot of properties that are under it, so I look at the historic preservation, we're putting a lot of effort in this, it's probably, I don't know if it's that effective, but we do, we do have a board, though, to help educate, and I think that's...
There's interest in the community, there's, the younger people are really looking at, you know, what they can do to preserve our history.
And they're, they do other things, they're looking at putting plaques up, and, you know, so there's more to what they're doing and work on their, in fact, their, their next meeting next week, they're gonna be working on their website, so that'll be a sunshine look, open for website development, so.
Great, very good.
If there's no additional question, so...
Did we open the hearing? I mean...
Yeah.
Okay, so we can close?
It was open and closed.
It's open and closed now?
Okay.
Okay. I'm looking for a call for the question, do we approve?
Uh, so, yes, I'll move.
Do you like to make a motion, honey?
I'll make that motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second by Robin. The vote, do you have, do you have to, Sherry, do you want to do an official call, roll call here? I've never had one of those, can we do one?
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Polansky?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move along, then. Planning matters.
All right, but I'm gonna let Peggy briefly go over her thing, but I'll, I'll do mine first, Peggy, if that's all right for you.
You want to go first?
Yeah, okay, I was just gonna bring up, are we gonna have a very intensive next meeting, so, don't get sick, be there. We have first the annexation report for the, the property on 17th Street that the manager signed off, so, one of the things, our policy is that you need to review it and make a recommendation to the council on annexation.
Why do you feel it'd be so controversial?
Yeah, well, it shouldn't be, I mean, but we, we set a process up for, this isn't one of the things we're bringing in a big subdivision or some use that, you know, it's a commercial property.
Okay.
So, but we, we'd set up a process years ago that was adopted by the council, so we continue to follow the policy for this kind of stuff, and so you're aware, what happens after the annexation goes through and an ordinance is done, we're gonna have to come back to do the zoning and the land use, it's not under our control, our land use regulations, until we've done that, so you will see it back before you at some time, and once the council's given us the okay to move ahead with the ordinance, and we have to notify the county, there's several other requirements, then we'll start preparing the necessary land use changes, and they're, they're basically, our, our, our policy that was adopted by the council was that it'll be a similar land use that they have in the county, unless they want to do something else, and it's up to them, we do not do agreements as some communities do, that, oh, you come in the city, we'll work out some big change in land use, that isn't how we do things, all right, so it's basically, they're on their own if they want to do that, oh, we're guaranteed, you're gonna bring in the city and we will do the, you know, make the presentation on the changes, but that's what, you get what you get, and I don't think there's an issue there, okay. We have also a combination change of future land use and zoning for a 6.5 acre property that is located between 17th and 18th Street, over there by the, near the Indian River Boulevard intersection there, you know where the, I think, defunct abandoned houses, townhouses are over there, you've seen them on the side of the road? Well, basically, that's a piece of property that the city, this is a request to the city manager, that we would change the zoning and class, so we could move, eventually move the, the substation that FPL needs...
Really?
...over to that location, rather than the location on Indian River Boulevard and 17th, which we don't think is appropriate, this is a bigger piece of property, so we will go through that at that meeting, so that will be, we're already sending notices out to the neighbors and everything that's required.
Have we heard back from any of the neighbors of any objections or concerns?
No, the, the only things we've heard so far is from the, we had some people that are concerned about, because the, basically, this property will be switched, so the postal, old postal annex property will then become privately owned, and my understanding is the Schlitt property, Schlitt property that's right next to it, they're talking about combining it to develop it into a center, so people like to know what's gonna happen there, but, but right now, I haven't really heard, until this comes out, a lot of people will be notified, every property owner within 500 feet, so...
What I've read, it's not official, but...
Well, we don't want to go into this, since it's quasi-judicial, okay?
Off, pass, forgive me.
All right, the other is we, let's see, we're gonna have the, the rezoning for the, the C1 rezoning, which is the Hampton Inn, remember, I told you that they need to change the zoning, so it'll fit for the project, so that would be coming in.
For the kite?
For the kite, and that's, that'll be quasi-judicial, too, okay, and we're making the notifications on that, and, and the tree ordinance, I put that at the end.
I thought we were done.
We're not really finished with that, are we?
Well, no, I, I am putting in your, your optional thing, that'll be in there, so as we discuss at the meeting to move the thing forward, so we can handle that.
And that's a legislative.
And that's a legislative, right. So, we have a lot that's gonna be on that agenda.
Tim, is anything coming forward on a site plan for the three halves, wasn't they, they talking about?
The site plan does not have to come before you.
Okay.
Just because what they've done is a reduction in the overall project size, okay?
I remember that.
And that's what it is, it still hasn't been approved by us totally, we have some issues on parking and that, so it's still in our office, in fact, I've talked to the, the lead reviewer on it, and he, until he's ready to come to me, I, I haven't signed off on it, so we're still looking at that, but it is a reduction in overall intensity of the site.
Okay.
So, which was approved at one time by you, but under our code, then it could be, if you reduce the density, or the intensity, everything, it's administrative approval, as long as, you know, we have all those requirements in there, you know.
Was that still for a drive-through? That corner piece, like, on Miracle Mile?
Oh, you mean for the, they are still looking at doing a drive, nothing precludes them doing a drive-through on that, but I have not looked at everything, so I can't tell you anymore until I've had a chance to look at it, but we both have the county and our public works department, engineering people looking at it, so, you know, if there's some issues there, they have to be addressed.
So, what you're saying, Tim, for the next meeting is bring supper?
Yes, this, this could be a long meeting.
And that's in two weeks?
That's in two weeks.
So, no, that doesn't, the one week doesn't start until October?
If, if there's a...
Yeah, well, we, we're not gonna do it till October 1, but we do have a lot of work, so I don't know, you know, we may be still having those two meetings, so we, we need to move things along.
If there's a lot of paper involved with that, can you get it to us as early as, Tracy, she's real good at getting us the information as soon as possible, so we...
There's a lot of paper involved, well, I'm almost, I'm, we've done all the staff reports in draft form, except for, I haven't seen the one on the rezoning for the kite, that, that place, but we're about ready, we could get them out early to you if you would like. We'll see if we can do that earlier next week for you, if you would like to have, because there is quite a bit of, even though the land use one for the, the combo is about 18 pages, so there's, there's quite a bit of materials involved, okay? All right, unless you have some questions to me, Peggy?
Thank you guys so much for letting me bend your ear again about some law, I hope you got my memo and the attached case, and I, I was trying to meet Tim's deadline, because I was rushing off to a conference, a legal conference up in North Florida, so it's longer than I would have hoped, because it takes longer, it takes shorter to make them longer and longer to make them shorter, and this is a bit long, and then it was so funny, because I got up to there to the conference, and one of the speakers up there did a presentation on the exact same thing, the Burt Harris Act and the Isle case, so, and he took quite a few pages, so I felt better about that. I also brought copies of the Burt Harris Private Property Act statute, if you wanted to look at, I didn't want to overburden you, but it's here if you want to pick one up on the way out, because a lot of the information in the act depends upon the definitions of the terms. Okay, so, last meeting, I know Robin wasn't here, but we talked about the U.S. Supreme Court case of Kuntz that overturned the Florida Supreme Court, and we're gonna launch from that into a Fifth District case called the Town of Ponce Inlet versus Paceta, and I felt like I should probably give you a little bit of background in takings law, constitutional takings law, and the Burt Harris Act, so that you could kind of read the Ponce Inlet case with a little bit more information in the back of your mind, so I'm gonna go through that quickly, I promised him I wouldn't take too long, and if I get too boring, you guys just shut me up. Okay, I'm gonna tell you a little bit, I think, first about general taking law and the Burt Harris Act, just as background, just gonna go over it, you've got your memo, but just a couple of comments, you saw that both the U.S. and the state constitutions require that compensation be paid to property owners when private property is taken for a public use or a public purpose without just or full compensation, and the Florida Constitution actually requires full compensation, which is broader than the U.S. Constitution, which requires only just compensation, in fact, Florida includes payment of owners' attorney's fees, expert costs, and business damages, and the federal courts don't allow that, so it's just a little bit of difference, quirky difference between the two constitutions. There are various kinds of takings, and I went through that in the memo, but generally, they're divided into either takings where all economically viable uses are taken, and those are the easy cases, everything's gone, or something less than that, which is a partial taking, and that's analyzed using the three-part balancing test that I mentioned in the memo that comes from Penn Central U.S. Supreme Court case, so that's a little bit trickier, because you have to balance the three different requirements against the facts. But as to the Burt Harris Act, and this is pretty interesting, back in the early to mid 1990s, some states tried to fill what they saw was a gap in the law, after the constitutional takings, with legislation that expanded private property rights and expanded compensation beyond the U.S. and state constitutions, so it was a little bit controversial, because some states felt like creating a new cause of action that was beyond the U.S. and state constitutions was not appropriate, but Florida and a couple of other states, Oregon, decided to pass these sorts of acts, and that's what we're looking at here as a Burt Harris action. So, basically, like you saw in my memo, a property owner succeeding in a Burt Harris action against a government has to demonstrate that the government has inordinately burdened an existing use of the owner's property or a vested right to a specific use of the property, and this is the tricky part, and I think a lot of the cases fall out here, the property owner has to actually show by a valid and bona fide appraisal that a permanent inordinate burden has quantifiably caused a loss in fair market value due to government action, so a lot of times when you get folks in here who say, "I'm gonna bring a Burt Harris action against you for this or that," I always think, how would they get an appraisal, a valid appraisal to show that there's actually a quantifiable difference? So, that's, that's a cutoff right there that cuts a lot of cases out of the loop. You saw in my memo that there have really been very few cases that have made it all the way through the courts, and that's on, I didn't even have the time to page the memo, I guess, but on the back page of the memo, or the next to the last page, it talks about close to 200 claims being filed between 1995 and 2007, but only a few of them actually got adjudicated by the courts, and most of them either were settled through that long process you go through under the statute, or dismissed, because they just weren't valid. But anyway, let's take a look at the Town of Ponce Inlet case. In the case that I gave you, it doesn't show some of the facts that came out in the Fifth District below, so let me just go over a couple of those, so that you kind of have a backdrop of what happened in this case, and to see how they got to where they ended up. Between 2004 and 2006, the landowners, who were to the developers, they cobbled together 16 acres of property to build a mixed-use plan waterfront development project that included a dry-slip stacked boat storage facility, so that's what we were looking at in the facts. They knew right off the bat that this development was in violation of the comprehensive plan, they knew that, and they started having various discussions and negotiations with elected officials and planning staff about the development and how great it was, and in general, the officials and the staff were all very supportive and encouraging, and in fact, the amendment that was necessary to cure the comprehensive plan issues was actually brought by the town, so it would be like Tim's planning department bringing the cure for their problems, so you can see how the developers thought, "Well, this, you know, this looks pretty good to us, I think we've got a pretty easy in here." They not only initiated the comprehensive plan amendment, but they held the transmittal hearing, they, they received the DCA's comments, back when there was a DCA, now we don't have one anymore, now it's the Office of Economic Opportunity, but when it went to the town, the elected officials, they denied the amendment, which they have every right to do, they listened to the competent substantial evidence, and they said, "We don't want you to go forward." So, immediately, the developers and owners who felt like they had been tricked, or rigged along, or brought along unfairly, filed a lawsuit against the town, and they argued under the Burt Harris Act that the town's actions constituted an inordinate burden on a vested right that developers claimed was based upon the developers' reliance on the town officials' assurances, so that's what their vested right was, that they had been kind of led along through this process, and they felt like they were led along, they were told it was a good thing, and they wanted, and they didn't get it. So, the Circuit Court ruled in favor of the owners and the developers, and they listened to all the testimony, and they, if you could read that case, that's a really wild case, but basically, the court said that they felt like the town was intentionally attempting to sabotage the developers, to destroy the project, and they found this, this line of evidence that came from the owners, developers, very persuasive, so they voted for them, they ruled for them. But the Fifth DCA reversed the Circuit Court, and that's the case that you all had in your backup, they refer, reversed and found that the property owners didn't have a vested right based on equitable estoppel, do you all know what equitable estoppel is? I think it's spelled out in the case, but it basically is a legal idea that you rely on good faith on an act or omission, and you make a substantial change in reliance on that act or omission, and they were saying, "We relied, and we didn't get what we were led to believe we were going to get." The Fifth DCA stated, and I thought this was pretty clear, and the reason that they finally decided the way they did, that a vested right based upon, and this is a quote, "assurances from town officials to amend the comprehensive land plan would also be in violation of public policy in light of the public hearings and other government approvals required before comprehensive plan amendments." So, just a staff member or even an elected official telling someone one-on-one that they were going to get something is very different from going before the entire board, hearing all of the quasi-judicial evidence, as you all well know, because you do that all the time in your jobs as planning and zoning board commissioners, and making a decision based on all of that, and it really wouldn't be fair for them to be able to sue later and say, "Hey, they told us something different." So, that's a really interesting Burt Harris case that's just come down, and that was actually adjudicated, apparently, it was a 12-hour jury that heard that case, so it was, it was quite a proceeding.
Is there any further appeal possible?
Yeah, they could appeal to the U.S. Supreme Court, I mean, to the State Supreme Court.
How recently was that?
July 5, 2013, yeah, yeah, it just happened to come down when I was speaking to you all two weeks ago, and I mentioned that it was an interesting case, but...
Yeah, until they had public input, I don't think the, the political powers there should have made their decision until they heard all the people speak...
Exactly.
...and all the evidence come in.
Yeah, exactly.
Prior to that, they were, they may have been what they liked, but it wasn't necessarily...
Yeah, and let me ask you a pop question.
Okay.
Why would they have been able to discuss that with those developers? It was a comprehensive plan amendment, those are always legislative, so they were allowed to discuss, now, if it had been quasi-judicial, they wouldn't have been able to have that one-on-one with those folks, and none of this illegally would have ever, you know, occurred, but... So they were allowed to discuss. Now, if it had been quasi judicial, they wouldn't have been able to have that one-on-one with those folks, and none of this illegally would have ever, you know, occurred. But, it's interesting.
Because it was legislative then, right?
Right, yeah. All the developers could come in and talk one-on-one, they couldn't violate the sunshine law, and of course, they could always talk to staff. So, anyway. So anyway, now you've got the actual statute, so if you take a look at that, I'll be happy to, you know, in weeks to come, answer questions, or, this is Tim's bread and butter. He knows this all backwards and forwards, and Lord knows, he's been through almost every situation you can go through down in the Keys during, during his prison sentence, I mean, job down there. So he, he's, have, did you ever have any Burt Harris actions, Tim, while you were down there?
I had five or six Burt Harris.
Yeah, see, he, he knows this stuff backwards and forwards. We've never had one here since I've been here.
And I had plenty of takings.
Yeah.
Let me ask, one of the questions I have, one of the comments you made was that most don't make it through the courts, they're settled administratively, or somehow they come to a compromise before they get that part. Generally speaking, from what your, your experience in particular is, I guess, do they, is it usually a compromise between the two parties, or is it usually, it wipes out, you know, they're dismissed, or is there usually a compromise? Is there any pattern we see there, that there's always some case or some, you get some kind of, you know, resolve for it?
Well, I think that the couple that, that I remember, we ended up with, we did some compromise. There was something given up in the process.
It wasn't a black or white thing?
No, no.
It was a gray issue, and therefore you...
To get there. You know, some of them were black and white, but there were, I think basically, as she pointed out, Peggy pointed out, I think a lot of it is taken care of in these mediation. I think it's like a year, it's a long process.
It's a long process. It's all spelled out in the statute.
Yeah, it's all very detailed.
It's all choreographed.
Right.
But, and you can see, based on what I said earlier about, that being a bit controversial to even have one of these that are extra constitutional, they're beyond the constitution of the United States or the state of Florida, that you don't want it to be easy. You know, you wanted to be a little bit tougher, these folks, and I think, like I was saying, Tim, I don't know if this was borne out in your experience, but I would think that coming up with that bona fide appraisal that actually shows there's gonna be a quantifiable difference would be tough in many instances.
It would be.
Think about that in light of the Beach Overlay District.
I mean, and that, that was a discussion we did at the Beach Overlay District, whether, I think, there's provisions in it, right, if we had notified everybody, property owner, after, basically, that would be, set the period of time that they could try to, right, appeal it under Burt Harris. But if you don't do that, they could, they still have a right after we deny them a permit somewhere along the line a year, isn't that how it works, Peggy? It's something like that, it's a...
And imagine, trying to come up with a valid appraisal for that.
If you're going for one.
How would one of the homeowners?
Right.
Been able to get an appraisal to show that, based on what you all passed and the city council ultimately passed, there would have been a quantifiable difference.
Especially in a, in a recession where a lot of the property values are dropping anyway, and then to show that it's really the act of the government doing it, I mean, it makes it even more problematic, I think.
We were a bit concerned about the 3-2.
Right.
Because that could have, the people on the, on the 2 side of the street could have shown, probably quantifiably, and that was why we advised you all that you needed to look at that very carefully.
I agree.
Just keep advising.
Well, that's what we're being paid to do. Don't have to listen to it, though, but...
Anyway, thank you so much for giving me the chance to...
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I think the board, and I speak myself in particular, but I think we're open to any insights we can get to help us in the future to make better decisions. Absolutely.
I won't be here mid-August, but I was planning on talking to you all whenever you have time, on the reasonable opportunity to be heard statute that just passed the legislature this past year, because that's very interesting. And I think we're in pretty good shape, just by having the public hearing at the top of every single one of our agendas, but it would be good for you all to see it and read through it, because it's got some interesting provisions about boards and commissions.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and I, and I like to offer, if there's any topic you want us to, to do more research for you, to, such as Peggy's been doing, we certainly would do that for you. So, you know, to keep...
I don't have a lot of time, but I really love doing this, so.
You know, the whole thing on the Burt Harris is, it's not understood well, and it's frequently thrown out there to intimidate someone, and educating the public, I think, is very important.
I think it's true, yeah.
And I, I think we'd like to hear that, before we stumble, if you give us an indication or something out there we should be aware of, that makes us be a better board, I think.
That's true.
Next, any board member matters?
Just, has anything, just as a follow-up on the minutes, has anything further been done on the, the short-term rentals with looking at raising the fines?
Well, we're looking at that, but I don't, I've talked to, Wayne and I are going to look at, maybe we can do that, but I don't think we can just pick on short-term rentals or we raise that flag. So, you know, we could raise it, but I, I get back to it, if we go through this process, these fines could be very considerable by the time we're done.
Sure.
Remember, when we, and you're probably not aware, for instance, we do have a case coming before the Code Enforcement Board, which I have to prosecute. Code Enforcement Board can do a $500 fine on it. They don't have to take, if they, if they don't pay a $50 fine and they appeal it, they could go up to $500 on that. Then they could set a per-day thing, so. But when, we will look at doing some changes. The concern we have is we don't want to just single out vacation rentals. You know, we are actively pursuing, we get complaints on vacation rentals, as I explained, I just got three more yesterday that we're dealing with. So that...
I know neighborhoods are concerned.
Right, and, and we're doing it, but it's, those are tough cases for all of us, and people, as I pointed out, are, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can on the thing. So, you know, but Wayne and I will look at a little more what we could do on it, so we could help it, but I don't, I don't want you to think, we can do fines per day, continuing fines once they've done, so there are ways we can make this. But the concern is, we want to be sure that this, you know, and we're gonna get to be tested on this, on, on the code, and on our rentals, and we need to make this stick to protect our neighborhoods, I really believe that, but, okay?
Okay.
Anything else, honey?
That'd be it.
Joe, anything? I'm looking for an adjournment, then? So moved.
Second.
It's adjourned.
Hey, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.